Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Town of Abingdon Town Council meeting Thursday, April 24th. This session, please note if there's any, please note if there's any opportunity during the meeting for citizens to address the town council with mayor declares public comments. We requested anyone addressing the council sign up, approach the podium when called, state your first and last name, and provide your complete mailing address, which we do not have anyone signed up for public comment. So Kimmy Field, please call row.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
Ms. Pillion.
Here.
Vice Mayor Alston.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here. And now with Councilman Pillion will lead us into pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amanda. Now we need approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second. Any further discussion? Kimmy Field, please call row.
Mr. Webb.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion. Aye. Vice Mayor Alston.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. And as I said before, we have no one signed up for public comments today, which is going to lead us into proclamations. We have several proclamations today. The first proclamation will be recognizing May 2025 as Small Business Appreciation Month, and Donna is going to read that proclamation for us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, proclamation recognizing May 2025 as Small Business Appreciation Month. Whereas, the small businesses of Abingdon are the backbone of our community, driving innovation, fostering job creation, and enhancing the economic vitality and quality of life for all citizens. And whereas, Abingdon is proud to be home to a diverse range of industries, including manufacturing, retail, services, tourism, agribusiness, and information technology, each contributing uniquely to our local economy and identity. And whereas, the town is committed to celebrating the achievements of our local entrepreneurs, small business owners, and especially our minority and women-owned enterprises, whose dedication and resilience play a key role in our region's continued economic growth and recovery. And whereas, it is both fitting and timely to honor the businesses that support our community and to provide residents with an opportunity to show their appreciation for the vital role these enterprises play in shaping a vibrant and sustainable local economy. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Small Business Appreciation Month in the town of Abingdon and encourage all citizens to support and celebrate the contribution of small businesses throughout May and beyond.
Thank you, Donna. The next proclamation will be recognizing May the 11th through the 17th, 2025, as National Police Week. And we'll ask Councilman Alston, Vice Mayor, to read that one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a proclamation recognizing May the 11th through the 17th, 2025, as Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed the first proclamation, designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week, a time to honor law enforcement officers across the nation. And whereas, police officers in the town of Abingdon and across the Commonwealth of Virginia serve with unwavering dedication, working tirelessly to uphold the rule of law, protect our communities, and ensure the safety of our neighborhoods, our schools, and our families. And whereas, these brave men and women report for duty each day with full awareness of the risks they face, prepared to make the ultimate sacrifice in service to others. And whereas, we recognize and reflect upon the courage, the commitment, and the professionalism of our local, state, and federal law enforcement officers, whose efforts are vital to maintaining peace, order, and public trust within our communities. And whereas, Virginia Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day provide a meaningful opportunity to honor those who have fallen in the line of duty and to acknowledge the enduring sacrifices made by their families, as well as the families of those who continue to serve. Now therefore, Dwayne Anderson, Mayor of the town of Abingdon, does hereby proclaim May 11th through the 17th, 2025, as Virginia Police Week and May 15, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and calls upon all citizens in the town of Abingdon to join in paying tribute to dedicated law enforcement officers who serve and protect our communities with honor and distinction.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
May we really get a picture?
Yes, we can. Yes, sir. I can honestly say that the town of Abingdon is glad to have everyone at the Abingdon Police Department. You all do a wonderful job for the town of Abingdon, and we really appreciate that. So please keep up the great work, and thank you all. The next proclamation will be recognizing April 28th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the town of Abingdon. Councilman Derek Webb, would you please read that proclamation?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a proclamation recognizing April 28th, 2025, as Town of Abingdon Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, vision met soil when Jay Sterling Morton inspired the Nebraska Board of Agriculture to dedicate a day to the planting of trees. And whereas, that first Arbor Day saw over a million trees take root, transforming the prairie into a living testament of hope, growth, and renewal. And whereas, Arbor Day has blossomed far beyond Nebraska, taking roots across the nation and around the globe as a celebration of nature's silent guardians. And whereas, trees shield our topsoil from the fury of wind and rain, offer cool shade in the summer's heat and shelter in winter's bite, filter our air, generate oxygen, and offer sanctuary to countless creatures. Whereas, trees are nature's gift that keeps giving, supplying the wood that builds our homes, the paper that tells our stories, and the warmth that kindles our hearts. And whereas, in the town, trees lift spirits, increase property values, beautify neighborhoods, and invigorate our economy with their enduring presence. And whereas, trees stir the soul, connect us to the earth, and remind us that even in the smallest sapling can grow into something mighty and magnificent. Now therefore, Dwayne Anderson, Mayor of the town of Abingdon, does hereby proclaim April 28th, 2025, as the town's Arbor Day, and he encourages all citizens to join in the celebration by planting a tree, nurture a forest, and take part in protecting the green legacy we pass to future generations. Let us plant not only roots but hope. Signed, Dwayne Anderson, Mayor. Now Kevin, I know I didn't say that with as much enthusiasm as you would have, but I tried. I tried.
So much better than mine. Just let everybody know that Kevin will be at Watauga Elementary coming up Monday at about 1:30. Our three Arbor Days at Watauga Elementary.
Yes, sir.
That's right. That's right. We're gonna have, we're gonna have fun there.
Yes, sir.
Love that guy. And for our last proclamation, that will be recognizing May 2025 as Older Virginians Month. Amanda Pillion, Councilman, will be reading that.
Whereas, Virginia is home to nearly 1.9 million adults aged 60 and older, a number expected to grow to 2.2 million by 2030. And whereas, the town of Abingdon is committed to promoting the health, independence, and well-being of older adults through strong leadership, advocacy, and community programs. And whereas, more than 27% of Abingdon's population is aged 60 and older, reflecting the town's growing senior community and highlighting the importance of continued investment in aging services. And whereas, the town actively supports its senior population through recreational, educational, and wellness opportunities offered at the Coombs Recreation Center, including fitness classes tailored for older adults, social gatherings, and lifelong learning programs that promote active aging and community connection. And whereas, Virginia's area agencies on aging serve over 86,000 older adults annually by delivering in-home support services, providing nearly 3.1 million meals, and conducting more than 24,000 wellness calls to reduce social isolation. And whereas, the Farm Market Fresh program administered by the Virginia Department for Aging and Rehabilitative Services helps senior participants access fresh local produce through redeemable vouchers at farmers markets. In 2024, the program saw $853,000 in redemptions, a 19% increase from the prior year. And whereas, 2025 marks the 60th anniversary of the Older Americans Act, the first federal initiative to provide community-based services for older adults. And whereas, for 62 years, Older Americans Month has been celebrated each May with this year's theme, Flip the Script on Aging, encouraging people to challenge outdated stereotypes and embrace new perspectives on aging. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim May 2025 as Older Virginians Month in the town of Abingdon and urge all citizens to honor and support the contributions of our older residents. Signed, Dwayne Anderson, Mayor, Town of Abingdon.
Thank you, Amanda. We have here someone here to-
We've got Melissa and Sally.
Melissa and Sally, please come forward.
So, wh- while they're coming up, the gentleman coming up is John Stepanoff, goes by Mickey. And Mickey is a, he is an avid customer of the Coombs every day of the week, every day of the week. Yeah, yeah. So, and if you mind sharing your age? He's somewhere around 60. Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah. So, he is, he is in phenomenal shape, and he's one of our best customers at the Coombs. He's up there every day of the week.
It's, it's, it really came about during COVID, when they were closed. I had to go to up some of those fitness every time and body by loop. And the difference in the cost alone made the Coombs a great place for people that are my age. There's not a single piece of equipment there, whole attached to the locations. I mean, now there isn't a downside to it. And I referred people to the groups, and I went across to the, they really should work closely. Sally and Melissa have had it Tuesday, Thursday, New Year's Activity Day. My call, I bought the Reagan Yanga. What days? In addition to having coffee and take Grand Natures, they've had it. Classically, just by anything you see, you look forward to participating. When all my travels are not seen in town this time, even bigger, they have two of them together. I'm there so much.
Thanks for sharing.
Thanks for the time, we're gonna have you fit. Yeah. Day is your day. Thank you. And as I said before, we don't have anyone signed up this afternoon for public hearing. We have no new resolutions, no first reading of ordinance, no second reading of ordinance, and no considerations of bids, which is now going to lead us to, excuse me for that, new bids. And we'll start off with the annual tree report. If I could have Mr. Kevin Signet to step up, please.
That happened quickly.
Yes, sir. Share all that, dude.
That's great.
Yes, sir.
That's great. Mayor Anderson, members of town council, it's always an honor when I can come up and, and spend a couple minutes with you, just giving you a brief synopsis on what, what we've been able to accomplish here in the past year, Derek and the rest of us there on the, on the Tree Commission. Section 7815 of the town code says that the town arbor shall present the town council its summary and analysis of the preceding year. So this is what we are doing right now, and it's always, like I said, it's always an honor to be able to stand before you. I've got a sheet before you guys, and hopefully you've got yours. Highlights of the preceding year, of course, always and first most, foremost, is the Arbor's Day celebration where we can continue on with our Tree City USA status. This past year, we had it at Abingdon Elementary. Mr. Anderson was there with us, and we had a wonderful time out there. I've checked it, that tree is doing very well.
Yes, sir.
And so it's, it's doing great, and we are very grateful that we can always do that. It's always a wonderful time to spend some time with the kids there, and we're looking forward to next week's as well. Tree plantings, we continue with our tree plantings in Veterans Park, Coombs Center, and along the Virginia Creeper Trail. We had our tree giveaway program last year, and last year it was the biggest one we've had to date through a grant through the Virginia Federation of Independent Colleges. We were able to give away over 1,400 trees that day. It was a very busy day, and it was a very successful day, and we are very grateful for that, and we are certainly wanting to continue that because, just to make you aware, we've come to the realization that if we want to increase the urban tree canopy here in town, we've got to get more trees out onto private property. You know, the town, town right of way, town property, it's only but so much. The vast majority is private property, so that's what these things are for. To encourage people to plant trees on private property to where we can increase our urban tree canopy, because I believe that will really benefit the town in the long run. We had a inflation reduction grant funding for, we've got two active grants right now, working on ash and dead tree removals along the Creeper Trail. We, there for a little while, we lost those, but we got them back, and we're doing, we're moving quite, quite ahead with those. One of them is through Creeper Trail Conservancy. It's under their name, and it is a matching grant with what we've been able to contribute. Of course, we, we're gonna meet that, meet that match very, very easily. And then we've got this other one that's gonna come in. As a matter of fact, yesterday in Charlottesville, I was told to just move right ahead with that. Don't wait for the other one to get done first. Let's just get cranking on it. And so we're gonna be active on that here once we get through next week. And we also have an inflation reduction act grant for a new tree inventory here in town. Our old inventory is from 2007. A lot has happened here in the town since then with trees, and so we felt that a new tree inventory, and therefore a new tree management plan is a very important thing. The Department of Forestry certainly agreed with us, and so that is coming up. As a matter of fact, I'm having a conference call tomorrow with the, with the approved contractor. They're working through, everything is going through the Department of Forestry. So we're not gonna see any, see any bills on that. So everything's going through them, and they'll be starting here sometime later on this year. After Hurricane Helene, I was privileged to be able to join with other members of the urban and community forestry strike team that came in and did an analysis, an inventory, not only on the Creeper Trail, but we were able to go down and help out down in the town of Damascus, because they were just hit so hard down there. And so that was a very good learning experience for me, and it was a very worthwhile endeavor there for that. Over the winter, been working on expanding the mulch beds on the, on the, all the trees over at the Coombs Rec Center. Still got some more to go, because when things got super cold, all the mulch just became one big block of ice, and there just wasn't much we could do with that. So, but we're still working on that. We did have some tree removals over in, on Green Springs Road and over in Sinking Springs Cemetery. We were able to clean up. We got volunteers over into Veterans Park, and we did a cleanup of the, all the ground vegetation there with the new American chestnut plots this past fall. And, and the people over there are saying that they're gonna try to keep that up and keep that place in a little bit better shape, so that people can kinda walk in there and, and kinda tour the area instead of just kinda seeing it from the outside. They want people to get inside to the plots, and that's just gonna require them to get in there and, and keep all the briars and everything else under control down through there. We had a, I still had a number of speaking engagements, as has always been the case here. The Master Gardeners here in Washington County and Russell County worked with the College of Older Adults, as well as the Virginia Master Naturalists, and I have continued my association with the town of Marion as their adjunct arborist as well. I go up there on an as-needed basis. The Trees Virginia Board of Directors and the Mid-Atlantic Chapter of the ISA, they're board of directors as well. And I continue to assist numerous property owners here in town with, should they have any tree questions and concerns. Goals and objectives for this coming year, of course, continue with our Tree City USA status. We've got our Arbor Day coming up next week, our tree giveaway program. That's gonna be in two Saturdays on May 3rd. We've got 850 trees this year set up for that. We've got a grant through the Virginia Department of Forestry for that. The registration went fairly well. We've got 286 people registered for it, and it took maybe about three hours for people to register for that. It was incredible that. We did have a little glitch with the program that caused some issues, but we got everything worked out, and everything is working fine there with that. So that's gonna be in two Saturdays, May 3rd, when we'll have the tree giveaway. We're gonna continue to work with the Virginia Department of Forestry on tree removal on the, on the Creeper Trail, as well as the inventory and the management plan. I'm gonna continue mulching with the tree plantings, new plantings. We are gonna have a, a test pollinator garden plot over at the Coombs Center there between the trail and the tennis courts. It's gonna be there, but it's gonna be managed by the master naturalists and the wild ones. They're, they, they tell us they're gonna take care of it, so, so we, so Melissa and Kyle have been most generous with us to be able to give us, give us a little plot of land out there where they can have it, where they can put up some signage, and people walking the trail can kinda go out and see that. Still work on structural pruning and street and pedestrian clearance pruning. Going to continue my association with Trees Virginia and MAC ISA, and I'll continue to be available to the town residents. Arbor Day is going to be next Monday at Watauga at 1:30, and Mr. Anderson has said he's gonna be there. It's great. Certainly welcome anybody else to come out there and help us, get your hands dirty a little bit, help herd the cats of all the kids out there. It's gonna be with the, the Watauga SGA, their Student Government Association. So we're gonna have a range of kids out there, and we're gonna plant a black gum tree out there near one of the parking lots, and we're gonna have a great time with that. So we're looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to having you there. So, so I'll open it up to any questions or any comments or anything from you or anybody back here in the house.
Her clerk has posted it, so we can all be there.
Council, do you all have any questions for Mr. Kevin Signet?
Thank you for all you did.
Thank you, guys. Hey, guys, I've, once, I've said this many times, and I will continue to say it. This is a unique situation here. Not every community has such a good working relationship with their urban forester, town arborist, city forester, what have you. And I, when I go to these meetings, I hear a lot of anger and crying and, you know, whining about, you know, oh, you know, and, you know, with these guys, and we don't have that. know, with these guys, and we don't have that here. And believe me, I appreciate it tremendously. I can't tell you how much I appreciate the support that I get from you guys for everything we're doing, and I think it shows out there. I really do. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Next with new business, we've got an acting aging program update, and that's going to be a Ms. Sally Davis. Ms. Sally Davis, would please come forward.
Mayor, member of council, thank you so much for letting us come. Sally is just a little bit nervous about public speaking, so I'm going to help her out a little bit, get us started, and then she'll be happy to answer questions as we get going. So over the past several months, we have taken a lot of surveys for what seniors are looking for in our community. Education was one of the things that they requested most. So we worked with local businesses. We just hosted Ivy Rehab today to get that education fact out for the citizens and for our active aging, to encourage them to seek medical attention when they need it, and/or just to learn something new, whether it's just a wellness program with Ms. Jackie, or theft and identity security with our police department, fire safety with our fire department, or basic first aid classes. We actually have two of our members at the center that are retired registered nurses, and they come on a monthly basis and check everyone's blood pressure, sometimes even the staffs, just to make sure everybody's doing well. They have been a great asset to our program, and the seniors seem to really enjoy that feature that we've added. We also take them on field trips. Some of these seniors aren't brave enough to venture out on their own, so we've had the privilege just recently to take them to Bush's Baked Beans, so they could learn all about baked beans. They had a great time. We took two busloads with that trip. And then tomorrow, we go to Farmer's Daughter, which is one of the meal places that we're going. Here's some pictures of the different places we've gone. We've gone to the 50's Museum with Charlie Henderson. Our seniors were great. They helped us with all of the kids in the Christmas parade, and they enjoyed waving as we traveled through. So that was a lot of fun. As I just mentioned, just traveling to a restaurant, we've gone to several in-town restaurants, including Gilu's, who sponsor us quite a bit, Bella's, you can see the list there. These seniors really like to go and eat, so we try to change it up and take them different places. We've even supported Damascus through Damascus Diner. We can't wait to go back there and visit now that they're open. We also provide different events. We have a picnic that we do in the summer and a Christmas dinner in the winter, and they really enjoy that time together. They dress up, it's a lot of fun. They bring food in. We did a cookbook where we provided, the seniors provided recipes for that, and they enjoyed being just a team and working on it together. Here's some more photos. Mickey is in one of our photos on the picture. They also provide a great volunteer base for us. They help bridge that generational gap. They've helped us with our Easter egg hunt, hiding eggs. They help us with our Christmas dinner for the kids, or Christmas breakfast, I'm sorry, with the kids. They've helped us make lots of pancakes and served lots of pancakes and syrup this past Christmas, and we hope to do it again in the future. And then our social Joe, that is our bread and butter. That is where they come in. They take over the space. They're loud. They build puzzles. They play games. They have coffee. They just share a good time together, bring in old annuals, talk about when they were in high school and growing up. They love to play Uno No Mercy, so if you want to see some cheating, just stop on by on Tuesdays and Thursdays, because there's a lot of cheating going on in that game. So, all right.
And I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to run this program. We really are having a lot of fun, and I'm so excited to see where we go. Like, it's just grown and growing.
Well, I do know there's several seniors in my neighborhood and several seniors in the town of Advent that really appreciate the things that you are doing. I think this is wonderful to keep everybody active in our community. So thank you both for your interest in what you are doing for the community. Thank you.
And it's packed.
Yeah.
It is packed. Often I'll come in, and there is not only, you know, no parking in any of the handicap spaces. There's no, it's hard to find parking anywhere.
The renovation of the rec where we have the handicap parking up front now versus on the side, you know, I'm there most Saturdays and Sundays, but, you know, I think that that, with that parking just being a little bit closer, you don't really know, but I think that enhances people down, instead of like, ah, that would invite people to come in a little bit.
It definitely took down a barrier.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Sure did.
It's very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. And the next, the new business will be Sinking Springs Cemetery Committee yearly update, Ms. Donna Marie Emmerich. And the forces that might be.
Spooky.
Thanks. Hello, everybody. How you doing?
Good.
Very good. I'm here to talk about what I think's the most exciting thing in town, the cemetery. So, annual report, we do have a full committee, so that's been very nice. Mr. Austin is our council representative. I appreciate that. Didn't have much, how do I put this? We had a lot of activity in the cemetery this year, but not of the normal kind. We had no burials this year, but we did have one ash spreading, but that's been it. But there was lots of other stuff happening. For example, trees. A lot of tree stuff happened this year. The fence along the upper perimeter of the African American or the East Cemetery, I don't know if you all noticed it or not, but a tree had fallen, and it wiped out the fence at the top, and it took a long time to get it taken care of. It wasn't ours to take care of, it was the property owners'. And it got taken care of, and I don't think it was two weeks later, that another tree fell in almost exactly the same place. So we got a two for that year. So that was big excitement. It took a lot less time to get it cleaned up, and the town crew did come and clean up all the tree that had fallen into the cemetery, and did a great job of it, so I appreciate that. Let's see. Two other trees in the West Cemetery had varying damage. An old oak growing beside the fence line out toward Russell Road got nearly chopped in half, it needed to be, because of death and decay. And though the town was fortunate that we actually suffered much damage during Helane, the one really healthy tree, right in the middle of the cemetery, a nice old growth pecan, got taken out. I mean, roots up and everything, and it took a bit to get that out of there. We were very lucky, though. Volunteers came and took out some of the tree, or helped remove limbs, and also there was, there were a lot of professional tree cutters in the area at that time, and from what I was told, one had come through and helped chop that tree, because it was massive. Strangely enough, with the hugeness of that tree and where it came down, no tombstones were broken. Now, several were knocked off of the ballast essentially, but nothing was broken. And ironically, all the damage where the tree was and everything was in the dead moor plot. Anyway, the tree is now pretty much all gone, and all of the road through there has been regravelled, so it looks, it's much nicer through there. Tombstone inventory, we got one. Johnson, Murmerin, and Thompson completed the cemetery inventory in March of this past year. They photographed, assessed, and cataloged each tombstone that was in that cemetery. They gave their educated opinions for the restoration of said stones and what should be restored first, so we will have a working game plan from here on out. A full accounting of their work is now with the town. For events concerning the cemetery last year, during the Third Annual Abing Historic Preservation Day, and if any of you all haven't been to that, you need to come, because it's a lot of fun. The cemetery was talked about twice. Once in a presentation about adopt a plot, and the second was a wonderful talk from an ETSU student by the name of Noah Hall, who explained his process for finding grave sites in the African American Cemetery, using the graves of Landon Boyd, the Andersons', three Buffalo Soldiers, and the Good family as test graves. Basically, we knew who was there and how many people were there. He described his process of using geophysics remote sensing, now this is cool stuff, electromagnetic induction, light detection and ranging, which is called LiDAR, and magno, let's see, magnometry, magnometry. To me, it's just magic, okay, to detect unmarked graves. Now, he found nearly four hundred and sixty-nine graves via thermal readings with side-by-side graves. Later in the evening, he met with interested individuals over in the cemetery to give a drone demonstration. That was apparently fairly well attended. Noah, just this past March, has defended his thesis in his work, and with further analysis on his presentation at that time, he has detected nearly eight hundred and thirty graves. Now, you think about that, in that one area in that East Cemetery, that just looks like a beautiful open park, there are at least eight hundred and thirty graves, side by side up and down that hill. It's astonishing. Adopt a plot is now in its second year, and we have had forty-five plots adopted by volunteers. A group from Kentucky came to visit the cemetery during the summer to learn about its history and basically to hear about how the adoption plan was going over there, and they were especially impressed by the story of John Hunt Morgan's brief stay in the Martin burial plot in the mound there. That's not where, you know, the vampires live, you know. It's actually the Martin, the Martins in there, because that was Morgan's first place that he was buried. Then he was moved to Richmond, and then he got moved to Kentucky. And they were especially happy to hear this, because Morgan had moved, been moved back to Kentucky, and he was buried not far from where they lived. It's like, oh, this is, this is pretty cool stuff. As I said, no new burials this year. To me, one of the most important things that we've come up with this last, this last year is safe accessibility to the East Cemetery. If you've ever really thought about getting into the African American Cemetery, the East Cemetery, if you notice, it ain't that easy, because you're coming in off Russell Road, and you're pretty much going to get run over. However, during our last meeting with Mike Cochran, thank you very much, and Gabe Christofari, who were the two people who came up with this, we may have found an answer to this. Where can we find visitor parking to enter that cemetery without fear of getting run over? The answer, according to a Google Maps search, lies in a small piece of town property right on Dale Road next to King Street, with only an addition of some gravel and additional signage. A lot could park three to four cars very easily. And with the small addition to an already existing gate just up from it, easy access is available as well. We may have actually found our solution. Happy, happy about that one. Plans for this next year include removing and treating trees, bushes and foliage that were identified by Kevin Sigman and Gabe Christofari this past winter. The preservation plan has been updated with this information, and will be carried out with general maintenance or in the case of tree removal, when funds are available this spring and summer. Using a Virginia 250 grant, the location of the nine known Revolutionary War soldiers that we have buried over there will be listed by the Sons of the American Revolution into a GPS app, and hopefully include biographical information on all of them. The town is also applying for a CLG grant through DHR in hopes of getting a specialist to come in and begin fixing the markers that are broken. So, that's it. I think we had a great year. Now, thank you guys very much. Yay!
Thank you, Donna.
Woo!
And the next on the agenda for new business will be the acceptance of the resilience plan prepared by Romel Kelpert and Kai LLP. And if I could get Hagan Gill to please come forward, please. Hagan, did I pronounce everyone's name right on that?
I just say RK&amp;K.
RK&amp;K, I got you. That's what we'll go with, sir. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. So we're going to be talking about the resiliency plan. It's been in the works for a little while now. Finally come to a final stage. So just some background on it. The town became aware of some grant funds that were available from DCR for developing plan. We applied for it with assistance from RK&amp;K. We got the grant, so then we worked with RK&amp;K, who helped us get the grant actually on the plan. And some information there, just on the slide. So, community input on it. We actually did have a public meeting for this plan at the regular meeting of the Infrastructure Advisory Committee back in January. RK&amp;K had a little presentation for the members of the committee and any public that wanted to come out to it, and were able to answer some questions. Comments, there's a comment sheet. We gathered some comments at the end of the meeting. We evaluated them, and RK&amp;K took a look at them, just for inclusion into the plan. Some of the comments got some new categories and some specific projects that we were able to add into it. So just a development timeline for the whole plan. We gave RK&amp;K the notice to proceed in November 2024. We've been working with RK&amp;K to identify new projects, and that was pretty much at the end of last year. We received the first draft of the plan about mid-February. Had some edits for it. They made them. The final draft was sent to us about two weeks ago, I believe. So it's right on schedule. Let's see, project categories. So the plan covers a lot of projects. I think there's seventy-two or seventy-three total projects in it. So some of the categories of them, floodplain, mapping, and modeling, that would provide more detailed data in areas that FEMA has not studied previously. Stormwater management facility and stream projects, that would be taking a look at existing stormwater infrastructure and streams, just for any improvement that they might need. Flooding improvements, it's kind of piggybacks off the stormwater management facility. One just looks at existing issues that we have in town and some possible new improvements that would help with those flooding issues. Then the last, emergency response, that would look at potential issues for any emergency response by police, fire, or public works during some event. Here's an overall project location map. You can see they're pretty much all over town. We have different, color-coded for the different project categories, seventy-one total on there. Here's a list of all seventy-one, sorted in by pretty much priority, impact it would have on flooding in the town. Nature-based approach, they pretty much all had to be to be able to get grant funding in the future for it. And then would it require any kind of property acquisition? So there's first forty-two, here's forty-three through seventy-one. Some there at the end are pretty wide-ranging projects or ideas, concepts that we come up with. So some of those would be just an ordinance for buried utilities, just future new utilities, getting those instead of overhead, underground, just for any kind of wind event, tornado, anything like that. Capacity building or training current town staff, that could be for some public works folks for bridge inspection, so we don't have to force that out. And then getting drain adjustments in places we don't have them, but we might should have them. So we included those in there as well, as some projects to possibly consider in the future. So the mapping and modeling, here's the map, pretty much all those projects that we come up with, RK&amp;K agreed with, include establishing base flood elevations where we don't already have them, mapping small tributaries that FEMA has not mapped, and even obtaining new data to include in our GIS system regarding the current town stormwater infrastructure. There's some stormwater management or stream projects. This could include converting impervious areas to This could include converting impervious areas to pervious areas, and most of those are located near the center of town, where there's a lot of asphalt and pavement. Possible new stormwater infrastructure on some town-owned properties that are vacant, such as some basins or, you know, maybe some rain gardens in the places where already have buildings. And then, just some stream restoration projects, just to improve the stream flows. Flooding improvements. Three, I believe, in that category. So, some of those were actually removal of some old mill dams that we found that were in Wolf Creek. Still there. Don't believe, they don't show up in the FEMA modeling for the creek, so I don't believe they knew they were there when they modeled for it. So, it's a little incorrect there. Looking at new ways to handle a large number of beaver dams along Wolf Creek. There tend to be a ton of flood, a lot of properties along Wolf Creek when the water backs up before public works can get it taken care of. And then, just some localized flooding mitigation in some residential areas. Emergency response. This is pretty wide-ranging, too. Includes pedestrian connectivity. That's pretty much on the far east or the far west side of town. Some sidewalks. One project was a possible emergency center, a new building at the Coombe Center that could be used as like a gym area when it was not during an emergency, but then it could also be kind of like an emergency center if needed. Creeper trail, trestles. Taking a look at those based on some other engineering studies that we've had. And then, neighborhoods with one point of access, and those are identified there on the map in purple. Trying to get that way, if there is something that emergency responders need to get in there, they don't only have one way to get into the neighborhood. Again, there's the overall projects, all seventy-one of them. Approval's needed. So, the town council have to be in approval with it. And then, we would send it to DCR for their approval. And then, once they approve it, they would consider us to have a valid resilience plan. And then, that would allow us to apply for some funding, future funding from the state for these projects we've identified and other projects. But we just had to have the plan before we could even apply for them.
An example would be the one that we've had several comments on over the last couple of years for recurring issues. And then, if you follow that particular property downstream, I got a call about a month or so ago from a person that owns the property down there, and he also has some flooding issues. But when you look at it on the map, going back to nineteen sixty-two, it's a stream, but it's not a map stream. But it still has some water retention issues. And so, having this study in place and accepted will give us the ability to get funding from the different funding sources that are out there. Because while it's minor in the scope of things, it still is a real issue. It's just, it's really real for people to get water. And then, the other one would be the hazard mitigation plan, which will come up for the next meeting. But in order to, it's kind of, you have to have both pieces of the puzzle in order to get, in order to be able to apply for the money.
Exactly. If you have any questions, I can-
Were you happy with everything that came back from the RK&amp;K?
Yes, yeah, we were. They worked with us. We had pretty, every two weeks, we had a meeting with them. They discussed what they were doing, any input we had on it. So, they were very accessible to us when they were working on it. And, yeah, they were really good to work with, and we were happy with it.
Seeing that you are a senior engineer, yeah, so as long as you're hands-on and you think everything was right with that.
Yeah, it looks good to us.
Council, does anyone else have any questions for Egan?
I think you did a great job in your presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you. Hard work.
Thank you. It wasn't as exciting as the other ones, but-
It gets hard to top trees.
I know.
Thanks.
And with all that being said, council, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the resilience plan?
I'd make that motion.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please, call Rolf.
Mr. Webb.
Hi.
Ms. Quitch.
Hi.
Ms. Philly.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Austin.
And Mayor Anderson.
All right. And before we go any further, I have a council member that will have to step away. So, if I could take maybe a five-minute break, so we could- If council member has anything he'd like to say before he leaves us. Y'all can give us a quick five-minute break, and we'll come back into session in five minutes.
...up for old business today, which will move us right along to miscellaneous business and communications from our town manager, Mike Cochran. He'll be discussing, uh, regulate regarding FY twenty-four, twenty-five grants and the FEMA additional revenue using fund balance as a match. Accept the grants and recognize the revenues appropriations for the additional income to the general fund and amending the FY two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. We'll turn it over to the town manager, Mr. Mike Cochran.
Sure, thank you much. Um, so as the, uh, as the agenda indicates, uh, throughout the year, um, one things we try to do with staff is to get, make the most out of the money we have. And to that end, Laura in the back, Laura Dowell on the back, she also handles, uh, FOI's for us. Laura has been very ardent about putting in for grants, locating grants and putting in for grants that will help further the cause of what we're trying to do as a, as a community. And, uh, as you know, uh, during the, like, well, it starts off with FEMA. During the storm, one of the things that happened was we had tremendous amount of damage throughout between the creeper trail and different assets throughout town. And, uh, so I put, uh, because she's very good at the documentation and navigating the different processes that. And, uh, so we put in for that and there's right at now, it's just short of two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, uh, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents that's been, uh, that's been through the approval process through FEMA. And, uh, that's just for the, uh, cleanup. There's additional funding that is coming, but that's a little further away and that's, uh, for some of the trestles, like Trestle fifteen is a separate independent project. The Trestle fifteen is going to have to get replaced most likely, but we have the engineers, um, from Possum is actually doing the, the report on that because while FEMA right now acknowledges it needs to get replaced, we still have to have an engineering analysis, uh, and cost on that. So, but with respect to the, with the grants, um, I just listed them in the summary section, but we, uh, have one for twelve thousand dollars for the, uh, updates, the historic, uh, district, uh, for the, from the DHR. And then from that, we also have, uh, twelve thousand. So basically this one works backwards. They do the work and we pay them, but they give us twice the amount of money and that's through the DHR and that has to do with the historical resources. And then marketing leverage, this is, a lot of this comes out of tourism, uh, and through the VTC and that one has a ten thousand dollar match. The, basically that's mostly what Chad and them do in tourism and we, we partner with different organizations in order to get the, uh, ads out there. Uh, that's Virginia Tourism is, uh, the Virginia's for Lovers is generally what they're known for. They're the folks that handle, uh, the rest stops throughout the state and, uh, distribute tourism and stuff. And then the trestle maintenance, uh, this was a rather big one. We had put in for, uh, a grant in order to help, uh, solidify Trestle one. Trestle one, although it looks good to your average person when you walk by it and look at it, when, uh, the engineers went down and looked at it, there are several things that need to get, uh, fixed in order to, uh, solidify it. So it will, uh, uh, it will stay, you know, good for a long time and being that it's our number, it's the first trestle right behind the thing, we want to make sure that, uh, that is safe and is repaired. So we were awarded a grant for that one. That's two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents. And then with that, there's a fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars, fifty-four cent match, uh, from the town. So it, all in, it's a fair amount of money, but when you see what the trestle repairs cost, you realize why it costs that much. But it, what this will do is go in and the parts that you don't actually see are the ones that really need a lot of the work. Um, the, uh, the train station that we have, uh, the inside of it, it'll, uh, the, the train station, uh, basically it's a, almost a hundred years old, I think it's eighteen thirty or so, it's coming up a hundred years old and, uh, it, it's no longer being used for the, uh, business incubation, uh, that it had been. But if you go inside of it, like the, the bones were getting old and tired. And so we were trying to find a way to help make that, uh, more viable use for the community. Uh, and so we were able to get a grant from the Wellspring Foundation of five hundred and eighty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, with a hundred thousand dollar match from the, uh, from the town and that could be a match with cash and/or labor. Um, but basically what that's going to be, the first third of it will be a community kitchen, uh, mainly for the folks from the farmer's market because if you look at our farmer's market, I think we have a hundred and twenty, uh, people that are, that have applied to work there, but there's only about, you know, there's, there's not enough spots, but we have a very vibrant and active, um, uh, farmer's market. So by getting the grant for that, there's been a demand for the community kitchen aspect of it because there's really nowhere for people to do that locally. Uh, there's some within the region. Uh, when we were doing this research for this, we went up to like Unicoy. Unicoy isn't exactly the central, it's, it's also across state lines and the regulations changed, but, uh, but for here, this is right down the street from the, uh, from the, uh, from the farmer's market. And part of this process is, is going to pay to bring the building up to ADA compliance and say, well, we'll retain the old doors, the original doors, so it won't change, uh, the aesthetic on the outside. The inside is going to be fully ADA compliant. The first third, which used to be at the frame shop for a year, that first third on the right-hand side will be the commercial kitchen. And then the middle section will be flex space, so it can be used by the kitchen or it can be used by the far side, which used to be, uh, spigners, I believe they call it. And that far side is going to have ADA compliant bathrooms, which is huge because the ones that were in there just weren't. Um, and then, um, the left-hand side will be used for, uh, senior activities. Uh, and it's a decent sized floor, uh, floor plan as it's being set out for right now. Uh, and all in, it'll give us a, a much more usable, uh, thing for the community in the long run. And then, uh, to please Mr. Troutman, because there is a revenue component, uh, at some point in time, there's a revenue component with the commercial kitchen because they do get rented by the hour and that's, it's a little further down the road, but they rent it out, uh, for people that are doing food prep because if you want to do food prep, if you're a, like a, one of the food vendors at the farmer's market, if you're preparing food, you just can't cook it in your kitchen. It has to, uh, there are certain rules that have to apply and it has to be done in, in a, in an approved kitchen. So that's what this will provide for. Um, the, uh, the next one is the farmer's market weatherization. And this was, uh, this came from Isaiah Thomas, who's been working closely with, with the different small businesses in town, trying to get them, uh, on the right path. And in talking with the farmer's market folks, the problem they have is in the winter it's cold, uh, and it's cold a lot of places, but this, this grant will pay, will help fund the weatherization. So you'll put like the infrared heaters and then they'll, some additional curtain, uh, they're working on the actual design, but it'll make it so you can use it more months of the year because in the winter it's, uh, it's pretty quiet in there. Uh, but this will extend the season and if you've ever been out there on a Saturday, it's absolutely packed. Uh, it's really probably the most vibrant farmer's market in, in the, uh, region. And so, uh, anyway, that's a fifty thousand dollar grant with a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, cash match and then some in-kind labor from the town staff. Uh, the community flood preparedness is the report that you just heard from RKNK or from, um, from Hagan on RKNK. And this is one of the components in order to get FEMA, uh, funding for future projects. Uh, and that one is a sixty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and ten cents in grant money with a six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollar, ninety cent, uh, match from the town. The historical tourism application, um, this was for a, uh, the grant, as Donna Marie, she left, but the, uh, this is for a, a grant. What, one of the things we're trying to get done is have a, a grant, have something that's interactive for, one is our tourism, but also for the kids because if kids come and they don't have a good time, they don't want to stay. And if you've ever been to Colony Williamsburg, they, when I was there with my daughter and my wife, we had a, they had an app you could get and you could go through town, you could see what they had, what, different places. So what this grant is for is ten thousand dollars plus a ten thousand dollar match from the town. It's to build out, it's, it's essentially an app, but it's not an app, but it, it works like an app, but it interfaces because some people won't download an app. And it's initially for the cemetery and, because we have a lot of, we have GIS locations and, and identity on all the people that are already in there. And I think Betsy White had written a book some time ago about who's in there and we want to build out an interactive experience using the app so that when tourists come, especially with Virginia two fifty, they'll be able to go there. And, uh, one of the things we have is the town, we have bicycle tourism and we have barter, but in order to round out our historical tourism, because right now we're, uh, we have great history and the, and historical tourism is big, it's just not as big here. And so by taking the app, uh, and making it a little more expansive, uh, it'll bring people there, but the nice thing with this app, once it's there, we can add to it. So all of our historical, uh, properties, you can add like the who, what, where, before and after photos, um, things like, uh, the different art that's around town. If you go up where the dental center is, uh, up in the medical plaza, they have some statues there and statues in front of the barter and different statues throughout town. And the nice thing to do would be able to help get people out of the car and walk around and see that. And the nice thing is, is it's a, it's a neat application to have and, uh, that's part of what the grant is for. But the idea is, is to be able to market our, to market the historical tourism because that's just something that we don't do as well as we could have. So, and then the marketing leverage grant, um, yeah, this is to help out with the Virginia two fifty. Um, and, uh, so the Virginia two fifty is coming up next year and so the ten thousand dollar grant, the twenty thousand dollar match from the VTC. Um, and basically what that will do is, uh, have to help us market for the, for the Virginia two fifty and that's something that Chad does. You don't see Chad much, but Chad does a tremendous amount of online, uh, placing of ads and, uh, paper ads are, they're not as popular as they used to be, but what, what we're able to do using these types of dollars is, uh, they use, uh, they aggregate cellphone data and they're able to tell where, basically where our tourists are coming from and then they're able to market to those locations. And it's been very successful thus far, so this is a grant for that. And then the FEMA VDEM, um, and this is, uh, yeah, this is what I mentioned first, which is the result of getting the, uh, the reimbursements for the work that we've done. And the interesting thing is, is so, uh, seventy-two thousand of that is for using our equipment. Now, in, in years gone by, if you don't document the stuff, you don't get paid back, but in this case, we have a pretty, uh, structured program in place that when, when people, uh, when a storm happens, we're able to capture that, everything that we're doing. And by using, Laura does the documentation along with public works, then we're able to file for it and be able to get reimbursed. And so that two hundred and sixty-some-odd thousand, some of it is for labor that our pre, our folks perform while they were, but it's just coming out of the regular operational budget, so that money will go back to the budget. Uh, the litter prevention recycling, this is something that we get every year, uh, and it's just, um, uh, fifty-seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's already a budgeted item. Yeah, the rest of these are all already budgeted. Historical preservation day, um, it's twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, to put on our, um, the town's preservation day. This will be the fourth year for it and it's, we hold it over at the Martha and, um, uh, that's, that's for. And then wastewater feasibility study, this is a free one we got from Mount Rogers. Um, I was trying to find funding for a specific type of project. We couldn't get that one, but we got this one and it was twenty thousand dollars. And so we have, one of our engineers is doing a, a study on feasibility of adding wastewater lines to specific streets in town. And we're overlaying that with projected where things, where some developments could happen. Uh, fire safety grant, the fire chief has been very good about trying to find money for some of his projects and so he got a fifteen thousand dollar grant with no match from the, uh, railroad and that was for a fire extinguisher training program that I think he has it, he knew it, here. But, uh, it was fifteen thousand dollars for that and that was, uh, budgeted. And then the cultural tourism, as I mentioned earlier, the, um, the area that we could expand on is our, is our, uh, historical story and we know what we've done, but sometimes we might be too close to it and we might not understand exactly how to market it. So, uh, in the, in this year's budget, uh, in this year's budget, we already had the match for this and we got the grant and it's to help develop a historical and cultural tourism plan so that we can, you know, strategic plan for that, so we can build on that as a, as a community and particularly with Virginia two fifty coming up, um, this should help, uh, quite a bit. And now the, uh, the last one is the, is a big one. When it comes to Virginia two fifty, uh, y'all know the, the history of the retirement home or the muster grounds. Um, we've owned that building for quite a number of years now and there's a lot of money in it, but the building is in disrepair and, uh, we spent some money in the last year repointing the brick and doing some things for it, but it's just a structure that needs to be maintained. And so we had a hundred and five thousand dollars in this, this year's budget. Um, and then when we wound up getting the grant, it requires a slightly larger, uh, match, so it requires a match of a hundred and seventeen instead of a hundred and five. Uh, but that's for three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars plus the match. What that will do, we had the engineers go through and tell us what it would take, uh, to get it to be operational, like the town in twenty-twenty-ish should spend over a million on field spend and pre-pandemic money. Uh, this isn't nowhere near that, so I don't expect quite the same result, but the building is different, but it does need some work, but we, the money we applied for was based on what the engineers had estimated would be needed in order to make it, uh, happen. And the nice thing is, because it's connected to the urban pathway, is, uh, when we get people here for the Virginia two fifty, they'll be able to go down and take their pathway and walk down and see that and see what's going on there. We'll, we expect to have some cultural tourism there. Um, one of the things we had, uh, were contemplating is having, um, things that are culturally relevant to Appalachia rather than just have, you know, the same old, same old stuff. Have you ever seen like what they do at Sycamore Shoals? Uh, similar stuff, uh, because it really is a, it's a neat property and we have some people in town that are very, uh, gifted when it comes to explaining the history. And so this will be a way to, to leverage, uh, all that together in order to make the building something that we can actually tour instead of just, uh, have it be there. And so anyway, the, uh, the fiscal impact on this is, uh, it's for an expense of one million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine, three hundred and ninety dollars, fifty-eight cents funded by grant revenue in the amount of one million five hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-four dollars and four cents. And then the remaining of that would be fund balance usage because we brought this, this has all come in during this budget year. We wanted to recognize the revenue and authorize the expenditure in this budget year. And then the, uh, the, the grant match is two hundred and fifty-three thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-four cents. And, um, and so, and then procedurally, this will go as a budget amendment, so it'll be open, it'll come up in next budget, in the, uh, next council meeting. But what I'm looking for is just, uh, uh, the ability to accept the grants as itemized above and then to, to recognize, to recognize also the FEMA reimbursement and then to allocate the match and, uh, from the fund balance. And, uh, yeah, and then the, uh, this will also require a, uh, a budget amendment in May, which we have scheduled for May fifth, I believe.
May the fifth, yes.
Yes, yeah. But it's a lot, but I tell you that the, the challenge on the grants is you put in for eight, you get two. And, uh, so we, we try and not say put out, we try and be targeted with the types of grants that we get because all of these, uh, carry out the objectives, what we're trying to get done is the community. Because like the muster grounds, it's got such a great story, but we've got to preserve the building, but it's just astronomically expensive to do that kind of stuff. So if we can leverage, uh, someone else's money in order to make it happen, that's what we're trying to get done. Uh, yeah, it's just a tremendous amount of money, but it's also, uh, we're getting a lot done with it. And so like the, the, even like with the train station, uh, the train station's a, it's a wonderful building and it's, it's historically significant. Um, but right now you go in and before we started working on it, the, uh, you know, it's just, it's got a lot of opportunities for improvement and that's what the grant will help provide for. And then at the end of the day, we're still going to have a place that, that looks exactly the same on the outside, but on the inside, it's going to be fully functional and for many years to come, it'll be a, a great community asset that we want to spend a bunch of money on. So that's, the, the catch twenty-two is on the, the, um, the muster grounds, the retirement home, if we don't maintain it, it's going to cost a fortune in the future. And so that's kind of what this point is, is if we can get a grant that helps us not pay money in the future for other things and similarly, uh, we have the hazard mitigation plan, uh, it's a regional thing coming up next and, and on May fifth, but we've been trying to, uh, like with Laura through FEMA, uh, identify funds that will help us save money in the future. And so there are grant monies that are going to be coming available through FEMA for resiliency, which is basically target hardening because one of our biggest liabilities that isn't really recognized are the trestles. And as we learned during the storm, uh, water can knock them over and Trestle fifteen narrowly missed getting knocked over, but by using the, uh, the resiliency process, which goes through resiliency grant process, you have to have these whole things in place, but by doing these things now, we'll be able to protect ourselves from future damage. And then also by using resiliency money, we'll be able to protect ourselves from what would normally be a maintenance item in the future, just like we're doing on Trestle number one. Every one of them has opportunities for, for making them more, uh, more weatherproof essentially. And FEMA is totally on board with being able to allow us to do that. So like Trestle twelve, which is the current one over the, um, South Olstones, is that what they call that?
Yeah.
So that one, the wooden side, uh, there's a bunch of, uh, damage there from, from the storm, but we're able to, once we get that fixed, they're also going to pay for the resiliency where basically what, what it would be is once the engineers agree on the, uh, the style of how it would work, they'll basically put, uh, breakwater type things so that nothing would hit it again. That's all I'm saying, so to target harden the, uh, the wooden parts that go into the ground. And anyway, we're trying to do all these things in order to make it so that we, uh, continue to operate efficiently and be able to make the most out of, uh, the grant opportunities that are available. And, uh, to that end, staff and Laura do a tremendous job about identifying these things. So, that's, uh, all I've got.
Well, one thing I'd like to say before we move on is Laura, thank you for everything you do. You're one heck of a grant writer and we are lucky to have you on board with us here at the Town of Athens. Your, your work has really shown, you know, I, I really appreciate everything you do for the Town of Athens and the community as well, so thank you, Laura.
Oh, I forgot one last one that just showed up the other day was, uh, we got, it's called, um, Yellow Duck Marketing and it's twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. It ma, anyway, it matches with Damascus because they, they had, uh, asked us to put in for twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. It puts us in with, um, cooperative with Damascus because with the trail and the, and the, the marketing campaign we have with, uh, you know, reverse the ride, this allows us to market cooperative. That's a fair amount for that, for the type of advertising we're doing. And so we'll be working, we'll be, you'll see cooperative advertising, uh, coming from between us and Damascus, but, uh, most of it will be digital. But the nice thing is, is, um, we got this, uh, very recently, but it's, uh, in order to, you know, since the storm, it just came up, they asked us to put in for it and, you know, uh, if we can get someone else to help pay for it, we'll certainly take it. And, and that one, there is no match actually, so.
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Mike Cochran?
We love grants.
We love grants and that's why we love Laura. Thank you for doing what you do.
And I got to tell you, Laura does a great job. I think she only, um, she just, she's in there all the time and just does, does a great job and one of her, one of the challenges on grants is getting them, but then it's tracking them.
Yeah.
And that's the hard part.
Yeah.
And, uh, if you have a grant and you don't turn your stuff in, she's going to find you.
I got it.
And, uh, so, but that said, uh, she, she really does, does an amazing job with that. But all that is from, uh, the, the, the town's perspective is we're able to get a whole lot more for our tax dollars because we're able to leverage it and, uh, it couldn't be done without the work that she's doing and staff does in general. I mean, I was saying to someone earlier, an example of what, what staff does is the Park Street, uh, twenty sixteen never-ending sidewalk project. That project, uh, as we were trying to get right away and it kept getting delayed and then cost exploded. And so we had to literally cut that project in half, but while we cut it in half lengthwise, we applied for additional funding and so we got an additional one point seven million dollars with no match from VDOT. So that project will actually be fully able to go any day now.
We got all of it now.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're almost ready to go to bid on that. And so the nice thing is, is it's not just these types of grants, but, uh, you know, the, getting the, the sidewalk stuff done is a lot. One point seven million dollars, a lot of money on top of, I think it was already a one point six million dollar project. So they worked very hard at trying to get that done and then you have to have people on the backend administer that. And that's just, uh, one of the challenges, but, you know, we've got a pretty quali, a high-quality staff that's pretty good at getting the grants, so.
So you need a motion on everything but amending the budget. On that note, we can do all of that.
I think that, uh, you have the notice of the public hearing will be published online beginning April twenty-fifth through May the fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. If counsel agrees to use the general fund, amended to the budget will be considered at the May fifth council meeting. If that's right, Kim, is that right? Cam?
Sorry, that was a long one.
That's all right.
They've been really busy with a lot of good stuff.
That's great.
Like I said, you know, that's hard work.
So we need a motion, Cam, correct?
Do we need a motion, Kim?
To approve the grant.
Well, I, I would think that we would want counsel to vote all at once, but what you need to do is to advertise that they're going, they're going to consider it, that they'll make this new time.
But that will be to amend the budget. So Steve, tell me if I'm correct, this amount is not in the budget at this point, right?
This is not in the fiscal twenty-five budget.
So we have to...
Recognize the revenue and then appropriately.
Yes, yep.
But it's a, I think it's sort of chicken or the egg. I, I think, I think we should probably do it all at May, counsel should do it all at May fifth rather than, can't really recognize the revenue until the budget has been amended and do the all-in-one vote, right? We don't want to recognize the revenue now without, we can't do that without amending the budget, so we need to do that all at once.
Right, so I think, yeah, I think that the purpose today was to see it, you know, test the, the appetite, if you will, of the council to move forward with the public hearing on, on these that have been identified for this year. And so, yeah, the vote would take place after the first, uh, after the first meeting. That would amend this, this for your...
I hope you don't need a motion for it. Oh, sorry. Thanks, Steve. All right, yeah. Thank you, Steve. And then next we have a discussion regarding the FY two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget. That will be Mike Cochran and Steve Troutman. Come on up, Steve.
Yeah.
So, uh, do we have slides or just general discussion?
No, I, I thought it was just...
Yeah, so...
We have the workshop next week.
Yeah, we got a workshop next week and subsequent to the previous meetings, uh, we've gone through and made adjustments, uh, throughout the budget in order to, uh, at the last meeting, we had a request to add a, enough hours, uh, for a part-time fireperson to be in the station during the evening hours.
Right, it was seventy-one thousand dollars, that's the gross amount, there's a net, but that's the plus plus for payroll taxes on that. And it wasn't an individual, uh, part-time employee as much as it was to allocate enough hours, uh, spread out however, uh, many individuals that may take to provide twenty-four hour a day coverage, uh, with two staff, one full-time and then part-time at the fire station. And that was a request that came through. Uh, so that was added and, um, as an additional expense, um, we did go through, between the general fund and the sewer fund, we allocate, we only have one employee who's actually one hundred percent in the sewer fund and, uh, that's Irma who's, does all of the sewer billing. But there are any number of staff members in different departments that have part of our salaries allocated to the sewer through the enterprise fund because we do work on things associated with the enterprise fund. And so we can shift part of that allocation. For instance, the new assistant town manager, uh, we increase the amount of time spent on the, on the enterprise fund because of all the, the projects that are going on and his interfacing with some of the engineers and things like that. So his allocation was higher than the previous assistant town manager. Uh, and the same thing applied, we're, we're seeing more and more activity in the finance department as well as public works and overseeing those projects and invoices and payments and things of that nature. So there was a shi, uh, a shift of, from the general fund to the sewer fund, uh, since the last time, because we clarified some of those allocations, eight percent, twenty percent, that type of thing. Also, uh, so, so that was a little bit of a savings, if you will, on, on the personnel side for general fund. It wasn't a lot, but it was, and it was spread out amongst several different departments. Uh, another change that occurred was the, um, the county, when y'all set the rate for the real estate tax, we had been given all the, the information in order to make a determination what the average increase was in the assessed value. Subsequent to that and subsequent to their vote, um, when, when the, when our treasurer received the book to import, uh, the reassessment values were actually less. And so where the previous version that y'all saw on the revenue side, uh, with the tax rate of nineteen cents, that resulted in about eighty-nine hundred dollars in less tax levy. This new one that came through, based on the nineteen cent rate, our tax levy is now off by forty-three thousand. So we lost some revenue in the fiscal year budget for next year on the real estate tax. So that, that plays into it. And again, we'll go through, you know, line by line in detail, uh, during the bu, budget workshop next week, which will include, uh, these type of changes.
Yeah, for assumptions, uh, there's lodging meals and sale, lodging meals and, uh, meals tax are unchanged. Uh, all of their tax rates are unchanged. Uh, there, there had been some discussion, uh, as the, uh, budget was being put together Uh, there, there had been some discussion, uh, as the, uh, budget was being put together about different things, different scenarios. But there's no changes on this one other than the fact that our, our, uh, real estate tax rate went down. And then, uh, as a general, uh, rule, we, we forecast for increases in our meals, lodging and, uh, sales. And traditionally, we underestimate those. And, uh, we're doing pretty good this year on that. So this is, the only revenue increase would be based on a five percent increase across the board for those. But that's not a five percent, that's just a five percent increase in revenue, not increase in fees anywhere.
Now, can I ask you a question? There aren't a lot of sales to those declarations this morning. When you did that five percent, did you use last year's, um, adopted budget five percent? Or you said projected as of February, right?
Right, we looked at where we were at the time in February. And then I will, I try to do a, a, a calculation to extrapolate that year-to-date February based on the increases through February compared to the previous year. And then extrapolate that out for the remaining, uh, months of this year. And then use that with a five percent increase on that. So again, that number is really a, a moving target as well because now we have the March activity. We'll soon have all of April's activity. Uh, April's looking very good right now, particularly on lodging.
Can you also explain to council, uh, sometimes when they're looking at these numbers being inflated numbers when it comes to the cause of, like, fire truck insurance proceeds and projects? And can you just sort of explain to them, sometimes when they're looking at these, they're not always actual, sometimes they're inflated. Can you explain that to them?
Well, I think there's, I, I think one of the, the keys is when you're looking for, you know, how does any budget from one year compare to history? And we tried to break this down and you'll see, um, we tried to break it down from an operational perspective. What does it take to operate the town, our normal routine maintenance, our normal routine street work and things like that? But for instance, this past, this, this year, when we made the, or y'all made the amendment to, um, bring over the remaining, uh, lost revenue, right? Okay, well, that was three million dollars. So, you know, three years from now, when they go back and say, you know, what the heck happened in twenty twenty-five? Because it, you know, the, the amended budget was twenty-five million dollars compared to twenty-one million dollars that, you know, because it was unexpected, unanticipated, and it was brought in. Uh, as Mr. Cochran went over these, uh, grants, uh, historically, we've had some grants, particularly in, you know, tourism and whatnot, but, uh, the minimus, if you will, but they certainly helped. This is a tremendous amount, one point eight million dollars. I mean, you'd be hard pressed to find a, a return on investment of a seven-fold increase in what your investment is. But that's gonna add one point eight million dollars to the revenue line and it's gonna add one point eight million dollars to the expense line as well. But it's not normal operating expenses.
And it eventually becomes a wash.
Right, right. But again, you, you can see these fluctuations. The Park Street is another, another example where in the past, when that was a, when we knew that we were gonna do the Park Street, it was included in the budget, you know? And then when you look at the actuals, you're like, well, what the heck happened? Well, it's been on the books for, you know, eight, nine years. Right, you know? So it's way up here, but then the actuals come down because we didn't do it. We didn't get the revenue, we didn't get the expense. And so we have to carry it over, uh, into the next year.
I mean, an example is like the, the playground at the Coombs. You know, that was allocated and we've started the paying for it, but we're actually not gonna do it for a couple more months because we put in for another grant in order to try and make it Abingdon-worthy. Uh, so we'll find out on that real soon, but it'll wind up being an amazing regional asset for us. Uh, so, so sometimes those projects, while you think they're gonna get done, like a year ago, I'd have told you Park Street's gonna get done. But the type, the acquisition sometimes is a little bit slower than we wanted it to be.
But again, you know, the, the town has been blessed over the last several years. I mean, we, 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 we skated through, if you will, through the pandemic, okay? We really did. We made, there were some very difficult decisions that were made to make sure. But when you look at, even on the operational side, if you look at the operational budget now compared to the way it was before the pandemic, well, we didn't have the sports complex, you know? So that's a, that's a new department, uh, you know? So things have been added to operations that weren't there before. And then you couple that with extraordinary inflation over the last four years, then that, that too is gonna increase that budget. Hopefully, uh, you know, your revenue will be enough to, to compensate for those, those additional expenses. Most of, and we've been very, very well on our, uh, meals and lodging taxes, uh, since the pandemic abated. It continues to grow. Now, some of that growth, quite frankly, is because of inflation, because we're taxing.
And more.
Right, you know, we're taxing their, their, their grocery receipts. And so when they have to charge more for a hamburger, we get a little bit more in taxes. So we have to be careful with that, that it's, that our growth in those areas needs to, has to be a combination of both the inflationary pressures, but also the organic growth of tourism in town. And that's what we're hoping for, you know? And, and these grants particularly, uh, really do address that, you know? Make it in a much more pleasant and, uh, place to visit, uh, and will encourage more and more tourism, so.
That's the plan. So it, it really is a, it's a, uh, it's a, it's a very complex process, but it works because what we're trying to do is just make it work for everybody. And we look at the, the meals, lodging and sales and, uh, when you see the growth, even if you trend it against inflation, uh, it still exceeds inflation by almost twice as much as inflation, which is pretty remarkable. But, you know, Abingdon, if you're in the area, um, we have great restaurants and we continue to be recognized, uh, nationally by the quality of the restaurants that we have in town. And that brings tourists. So we try and do a couple of different things, uh, to just make it nicer. And as part of what we do is an op- from an operational side is, uh, like, I always joke about other places, but Abingdon's an amazing place. And so when you come here, I want everybody to have that wow experience. And I want people from really nice places to come here and feel bad about where they live. That's kind of the, kind of the objective because it really is.
We don't want them to feel too bad where they live.
But I mean, I want people to have that experience because it really is an amazing place. And when they see that, even if they come here and go to the Meadows, they're gonna come back, uh, on vacation or whatever in order to see stuff. So, uh, on the expenditure assumptions, um, also, all right, back to the, right, but the, this, uh, includes the two fifty-two, two eighty-four general fund balance and that really is the grant match that we just went over from the thing. So it's not a, a normal recurring expense. Uh, it's just the, the one and done in order to get the, um.
Yeah, the point of clarification on that too, for the amendment that we'll ask you to vote on in May for this year's budget, okay? That's because these awards came through this year. But not all of the work and all the revenue is gonna be actually received this year. And so it will carry over into the next budget. This budget anticipates all of that carrying over.
And that's where that inflation comes in too.
Right, right. And so like, like Mr. Cochran said, the, the use of the general fund balance in twenty twenty-six is really the carryover of the grant match from fiscal year twenty twenty-five.
I said inflation, but I meant inflate.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, and honestly, but so that, but the nice thing is, is that we're able to get a whole lot more bang for our buck literally by operating what we're doing. Um, the expenditure assumptions, um, inflation continues to hit everybody, so there's a two point nine percent COLA and that's based on social security index or?
That's based on the CPI index that the state uses when they address, uh, increases in the minimum wage rate, uh, for the Commonwealth.
Yeah, and then there's, uh, the, the ten-year step for the PD, I think that's about eighteen thousand?
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Yeah, okay, yeah, but, yeah. Sure, but that's what's in this particular one. We can always, uh, tweak as we need to. And then there's promotions certifications throughout the departments. That last time it was stuck in administration and I put it back to the departments where it's most likely gonna be used. And then, uh, it, for the third year in a row, our health premiums have held steady, which is amazing. And just for the record, I know this came up last time, our council does not receive health benefits. Some organizations throughout the state, their, their councils or their supervisor boards receive health benefits, ours don't. I just wanted to make that a point so, uh, people understand that. Uh, there's no new full-time positions in this one and then the, uh, part-time firefight, which we already covered. And we had, uh, the non-VDOT paving projects, uh, we had to pull out of this one. Now, the, uh, the, the sewer work that's going on throughout town, the, that funding, uh, which is primarily what those, that funding was for was to fix those roads in a more permanent fashion. Those projects, uh, it pays for them to be repaired, doesn't pay, doesn't, but it won't allow you to repave the entire road with those funds. And so, uh, then the CIP, this includes the, uh, other grant match we already covered. And then, uh, there's also, um, three hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the Barter, which would be two hundred, the William King, which would be a hundred. And then the Arts Commission would be the remaining balance. And I know that one also is a point of discussion, so.
Now, did y'all discuss that today?
Uh, no, where? Uh, no, you, you.
Okay, can I sort of bring that up?
Sure, sure.
We've already had this discussion on, um, William King, who had already paid seventy-five thousand for this. And we had a discussion of where we were gonna start at twenty-five and then as they needed it, if they needed it, then we would revisit it. And so that'll change that number too if we go back to what was already discussed. You remember that discussion?
I do not.
You don't?
Now, when, I mean, when was, was that this budget cycle or was it last budget cycle?
No, this is, this was not long ago.
Oh, yeah, about a month or so ago, we brought in where they had, um.
That was the previous grant match that they had?
Yeah, so the, the, the grant that they're asking for a match for is they're asking for a hundred thousand dollar match, uh, in order to, it's an ARC grant that's fixing to expire. On, and when they sent me the paperwork on this one, this particular grant, when it was first received, the town gave them, gave them seventy-five thousand towards this grant and three twenty-five thousand dollar payments. Uh, and then after that happened, which has been several years now, um, the, they were saving money to finish that grant and then they, last year they removed that and they put it in a different pot in order to get their other project going. But the seventy-five that we've already paid, we've already paid. Uh, and so, but the way the budget is written in draft form, obviously, is to have the hundred. When we had discussed this back in January, the whole, the whole thing was this, and what I told Betsy was, um, uh, you know,
Project-based.
Project-based. And then, and then that's when this came back of, hey, that's the project. And then subsequent to, yeah, subsequent to that.
And then I read Dwayne and someone said, well, you agreed to start at twenty-five and then we went.
Yeah.
Well, and, but I, I also wanna say that, that as far as this grant goes, I agree with you. Um, I am a strong proponent though, uh, and, and they have asked us this for years. And I think as they grow into what they are going to become, um, hopefully in the near future, that, um, we do need to have William King, uh, budget on a annual basis. I think if they do continue with, um, you know, I've heard at college, you know, the Central Park of Abingdon, you know, the amphitheater and the walking trails and all of those.
But I think we always have.
We, it's been, they've not been a, they have come to us and we have appropriated money, but they have not been a standing item in our budget since we did away with the non-partmentals to follow them. So I, I am a proponent of planning for that rather than them having to come and continually ask for our support.
Well, can you give us a report though on the actual, what we have now in the last years given?
I have that information, but not in front of me.
Well, that's okay.
Yeah, I can email it to you though.
Send it to us before the budget process.
One, and I'm not proposing a certain amount, right? I'm just saying that I feel pretty strongly that we need to come up with an amount that we are going to give them every year because it helps them with their budget planning. I mean, it would help, you know, Barter knows what we're gonna give them every year. It helps them with their budget planning. Um, so I think that any organization that we're gonna help year after year, we should have an idea of approximately what we're gonna do and that also helps with our budget planning.
Well, I'm okay to start with the twenty-five there and then as projects that they need, let them come to us and, you know, I'm okay with that too. Because they used to be in our budget.
Yeah.
When I first got on council.
Yeah, there was a line, yeah, they had their own line item.
We haven't had a line item though for them since we did away with, uh, with non-partments around.
Well, that's happened since I've been on council.
Yeah.
Yes, and then January of twenty-four, we made a single appropriation of a hundred thousand. Um, and that was, that was January twenty-four, I believe? Yeah, and that was based on the other project that they're working on now, which if you haven't been up there, um.
It's a big project.
Yeah, if you wanna know what a thousand micro pilings look like, head on up there.
So, um, could, it, it, has there been discussion of doing what we, with them, what we do with Barter, which is, um, provide them with advertising support? Because isn't that how that works? Since Barter's kind of a project-based, don't we support their advertising?
Yeah, that's.
And that's where the money we give them goes.
Correct, yeah.
So could we, could we come talk to William King and see if there's an appropriate amount for us to do that for?
Yeah, I have a meeting there on Mon- Monday at one thirty, so I'm, I won't be at the Arbor Day thing, but I can meet, meet with her on Monday at one thirty and ask her what.
I'm sure we can come up with enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Come up the way, because the, the cooperative advertising works really well because like, we do that for some of the bigger magazines we get advertising in and it's so much easier. If someone's coming to town to see the Barter, they're also coming to town. So why don't we share the advertising and, uh, and rather than each of us pay for a page?
And I'm certain they're already spending some money on advertising.
Oh, absolutely.
And that makes it a tangible thing that we're giving them money for rather than us just giving them money.
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, correct. And then Chad and, and that crew, they're very, very good at getting the folks here. And so I think that would be a good way to, um, help them, help us and all that so forth, so.
Yeah, I think we've discussed that in the past. I just don't think it's ever been fleshed out.
Sure, sure. Okay.
And that was a discussion that we had earlier. We, we were debating about what numbers put in. And I think they'd made the request for the hundred. And we had talked after twenty-five, I heard fifty. So we, we never really actually settled on that number.
Right. Yeah, correct. It was, it was like, we won't set a number, you'll have to then come to us on the per project. But if we go to the advertising thing, I understand that aspect as well. This one, the initial request was at a hundred, that's when we realized, I didn't know it until the, Mount Rogers, I think is handling some of the administration on that grant, and they sent me the back, the paperwork that I produced, I guess about two months ago, where it listed the previous, um, payments on the same exact grant.
I think for our budget process, you need a number.
Well, it, it certainly is easier to start with a number, yeah.
Yeah, next Wednesday, you know, to fine-tune it and see what the number, because whatever, hopefully whatever comes out of the, the, the meeting next Wednesday will be teed up for public hearing on mid-May, right? Well, no, we're gonna have to, we won't have time, right? Cam, it'll be the May twenty-first, May twenty-first. Will be the first public hearing. And then we'll have to have the second public hearing to, in mid-June because of the timing there. Because of the advertising for the timing of the public notice, it's gonna be mid-May and mid-June to, for final approval at the end of June. In time for Ju- July first.
It certainly will, certainly will. And, uh, so anyway, um, have you, uh, yeah, I've, yeah, all the books have been pri- updated and provided to you. Um, and I guess we can, we're gonna reconvene on Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday, Wednesday morning?
Eight fifteen, I think.
All right, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Does anybody else on council have any, any more questions for town manager and, uh, Steve? Does anybody have any more questions for them, the council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. That's gonna move us to item line number three, um, discussing regarding the town's economic development authority. If I get Isaiah Thomas to come forward. Hey, Isaiah, how are you today, sir?
How are you, everybody?
Yes, sir.
Um, so, as you guys know, we've been working on kind of, um, realigning the EDA with, uh, a mission and several missions in town. And in that, um, one of the things they've kind of started championing is ushering in a DORA within the town limits, um, the designated outdoor refreshment area. They felt that they needed to apply for that and they've been working through the licensing process through that with the ABC. And within that, in their application, they're right, they're in the application phase now. They have determined that going through, when they originally were set up in the town ordinance, it was adopted as the industrial development authority of the town of Abingdon. And they got an EIN number underneath that name and they never registered with the State Corporation Commission. And they kind of followed that up till now. I believe in twenty thirteen, the town ordinance actually changed it to the Economic Development Authority of the town of Abingdon, but they never went and did a name change on their EIN. So when they went through the application process of the ABC, it, they had these discrepancies that one didn't reflect the other. So our town ordinance currently states it as the Economic Development Authority of the town of Abingdon and their EIN does not. So they would need to receive a new EIN as well as form as a non-stock corporation with the State Corporation Commission as the Economic Development Authority of the town of Abingdon, Virginia. So that's pretty much what they need to do now and they need the council's authority to do so as you guys are the ones who, um, created them.
Yes, sir. Counselors, do you all, does any of y'all have questions for Isaiah about this? Would anybody like to make the motion to approve the registration of the Economic Development Authority of the town of Abingdon with State Corporation Commission, following with the new federal employee identification number?
What's up?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Kim and Bill, please call Row.
Ms. West?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Hi. Isaiah, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Isaiah.
I assume this was for Commonwealth-oriented marketing purposes, to not just limit it to industrial, which is, say, economic development.
Yeah.
The statute actually has it interchangeably. It says it can be, if it was industrial, it's a economic, but I guess the State Corporation Commission would be specific, which I guess in a sense does not...
Does those rules change, like, daily, monthly? You know what I mean? How do these rules change?
So, I think when we, I mean, I don't, I previously talked to Cam about it, and on the state statute, it didn't really seem to be an issue. But then, when we started working through the application process with the ABC, they were really thrown a fit over the fact that they didn't match each other.
I deal with the ABC on a regular basis, and that's like something...
Yeah.
If your ABCs don't match, you're a fellow.
Yeah.
You're definitely not.
So, and not only just for the door, but just going forward, we kind of determined that it'd probably be best that everything aligned with each other as they go into doing more grants and having things that will be reflected on their EIN number that they probably should be more in line.
Sure, sure.
And whether not a sole proprietor or an LLC, they can't just change the name, because we looked at just doing a name change and keeping the same number. But the feds won't let you do that.
I got it.
You're going to have to be a whole new entity. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Now, we're going to move forward to council members' reports, and we will actually start with Mike Cochran. Would you like to start?
The only thing I wanted to add is I've had a couple people contact me about the hillside in front of Veterans Memorial Park, and last year, we had done some work to it, and it still needs some work. But what we're doing is, over the next week or two, you'll see them, they're going to have to spray in order to get rid of some of the weeds, and we're going to hydrate it with grass mixed with wildflowers. So, if y'all have gotten off the interstate in North Carolina and you see the beautiful stuff in the middle, the goal there is to make the hillside wildflowers, where there'll be perennial-type flowers. It should look a whole lot better than it looks right now. And Matt with Public Works has been working with Laney, who, as we all recognize, is the councilman flower person. So, the nice thing is, that will look good. It'll take probably about a month from now, it's going to start sprouting up, and then we expect to have wildflowers that will look a whole lot better than around hillside. But it will look bad for about a month until it starts to come back.
Councilman Amanda, do you have anything?
I do not. Just thank you to the town staff for your hard work and to everything, for everything that you've been doing. Oh, I do have one thing. Mr. Cochran put it in his weekly report, but I absolutely love the soccer banners. I've had two or three parents speak to me about them, and I don't know if you've seen them at the Meadows, but they're the senior banners.
I haven't, but I'll check that out.
And they're fantastic, and I just think it's such a great partnership between us and the high school. And the parent who I spoke with said that Kyle Pollard was so, so very helpful, and she also said that when they were out there to look at him when they were first hung up, that all of the Public Works, the people who were working at the Meadows and who were mowing, and everybody who was working kept stopping and talking about how wonderful it was and what a fun project it was to work on, and how happy it made them also. So, they just said, that whole group of parents said such wonderful things about working with the town, and I just think it adds to why the Meadows is a special place. So, thank you to everybody who helped with that.
Only thing I have to offer is this Saturday, Farmer's Market, eight o'clock in the morning, twelve thirty, one o'clock. I think it's Earth Day as well, too. If you have kids, adults, anyone that would like to come out, there will be a lot of activities going on at the information center on the lawn and with the Farmer's Market, so we would love for everyone to come out and attend that. Vice Mayor Austin?
I follow everyone's attention. The May twenty-sixth, Memorial Day, at eleven o'clock at Veterans Park, the program that will be presented at that time, always a very moving program. There will be additional trees for persons that we will honor at that time.
I think we got three tree dedication...
We did.
Vice Mayor?
Yep. So, mark your calendar from Monday, May twenty-sixth, at eleven o'clock for that. And Mr. Cochran, I believe that I saw some dirt being moved over on Winter Ham Drive today.
Yes, you did. I'm glad you reminded me of that. That has been a, you can tell that we're adding rock and so forth in order to solidify it, because we can't stop people from turning around, just to at least keep them from sinking, hopefully.
Well, we have eight indicators down Coming Street going in a southerly direction, and that includes two blinking signs. That hasn't done it yet, and I continue, like you do, and I know the chief of police does, keep getting pictures of tractor and trailers flocking the road over there, so hopefully, you know, we don't want to force them into the subdivision, so I guess about the only other alternative is to do what we're attempting to do, and I think that's good.
Thanks, yeah. It's, I'm hoping it works, that's all, because no matter how many times you replant that stuff, it, just as soon as it starts looking good, someone will drive right through it. And with as much, with the clay content of that, it just doesn't percolate like it should. So, hopefully, the rock and the rock base will help make it a safer place for people to turn around and not get stung, sunk either, so...
Yeah. Well, and I think you told me, you had requested V-DOT to allow us to do that earlier, and they would not.
Correct.
And the problem continued, and then they finally gave us permission as the town...
Correct, yeah, because every time I got a picture, I sent it to them.
Good, good. All right, well, hopefully, that's relieved folks over in that area.
Lost on our fingers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Cochran. All right, Councilman Donna, do you have...
Oh, yes, tourism. The Virginia Creek Trail Welcome Center is open and seeing lots of activity on the trail. It's a great thing, springtime. The tourism team is working with I-5 Tourism on a new visitor guide, and that's part of the grant, the new tourism grant. And the updated historic walking tour brochure will be going to the printer in just the next few days.
Thank you, Donna. Any other councilman reports?
I'll just remind everyone of our budget workshop next week beginning at eight fifteen.
Eight fifteen, all right.
Yes, sir.
Sure, can we have a week?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda is appointments to boards and committees. We just have one of those, and that's going to be for the Abingdon Arts Commission, and that's to appoint to fill the unexpired term of summer.
There's three applicants, it appears, and when I was looking through, and they all seem qualified. One lives in the town limits, see, one lives in Glade Spring, one lives in the county, you know, it has an Abingdon address, but it's not in the town limits, and then one is in the town limits. So, I don't know if we want to continue our previous tradition of, you know, prior path if people who live in the town to serve on these commissions, or if you all have a preference otherwise.
I'm leaning towards the one that lives in the town of Abingdon. That's okay.
I agree.
On the council.
Okay.
And the name of that person would be...
My thing is sticking together here.
Darren Crowe.
Darren Crowe.
I knew we'd appoint Darren Crowe to the committee.
Arts, Abingdon Arts Commission?
Yes, sir.
And I'll say...
Any further discussion? Kim and Bill, please call Row.
Ms. West?
Hi.
Ms. Billy?
Hi.
Hi.